Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson and Bonnie McCardo with Veterans and Politics. Today, our guest is Billy Mitchell. He's a candidate for Clark County District G, Clark County Commission District G. Bonnie, do you have anything?
I'm just the same old thing. I just want people to vote and not look on sides, research your candidates, feel their energy, see if they're really out there with the people, or if you look and be like, oh, wait, he says he's been doing something, but he's not really ever been in the community. I've never seen him. Then you vote.
Carpet baggers, what we call those.
There you go.
Mr. Mitchell, thank you so much for being on the program.
Thank you for having me, Steve.
Could you tell us about you?
A little bit about me. I was born and raised here in Vegas. I graduated from Old Vegas High School. Go Wildcats. I went in the military, served in the Navy.
Okay, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
How many years?
I served almost seven years during two wars. I served on three nuclear submarines.
Wow.
And I served with SEAL Team Five.
Oh, wow.
So, yep, I came back here.
Were you a corpsman?
No, no, I started off as a sonar man and then electronic countermeasure specialist.
Okay.
Yep. So, I got out of the military, went back to school, got my bachelor's, got my master's, got my teaching credentials.
Wow.
I taught.
Big smarty pants.
Yes, I did see that. But you're a teacher. I was like, okay, okay.
I taught at Coronado High School for several years.
What subject?
It was engineering, architecture, and CAD.
Ah.
And while I was there, I did several programs. I coached football undefeated.
You got my vote. I love football.
Undefeated.
Undefeated.
Those poor kids.
Oh, no, they loved it. They didn't like the first, like, month, but, oh, it was interesting, especially the demographic of them.
And then they all want to be the coach.
Yeah, you know, they think, you know, before I got there, they, they thought of Coronado as a country club. That was his nickname. And then I came in there and I had a great athletic director with Sam Johnson, who was from Missouri. So, he was old school. His son was also on the team. So, he was getting direct feedback. And he loved it because I was hardcore military.
Right.
I brought in assistant coaches for Hell Week. And we kept it just basic fundamentals. Literally, we had 10 plays and that was it.
Did you have success stories of guys going to the NFL?
I don't know about the NFL, but several of them did get to go to college and move on with that. And had 80 kids on the team. And I'll never forget when one of the coaches was there, he told me, you know, because I'd never coached high school before. And he said, Billy, he said, you can play your top 11 players and you'll win every game. Or you can play all 80 of your players and you're not going to win a game. So, you can relate to this. In the military, I kind of looked at it and said, okay, well, in the military, they don't buy into that. Everybody's, you're only as strong as your weakest link. So, I got with my coaches and they bought into the whole team philosophy together. Everyone achieves more. And we worked with all 80 kids. All 80 kids played every game and we won every game.
There's no line team and you let every kid.
That's right.
No bench warmer.
Yes.
Nope.
If they were, then they got up.
Yeah, you're only as fast as your weakest link, right?
Right. And conditioning was a big part of it. I remember Mr. Johnson used to pull me in his office and he'd say.
He was head coach?
He was the athletic director. I was the head coach. And he'd pull me, he's like, oh, you got to read some of these emails. And parents would come in, they're like, oh, he's killing my son. All my son has to do is sleep. And, you know, and then about the third game in, you know, it's, we're firing on at least seven cylinders, you know, because we're improving every week. And then it all changes.
And that goes same for the military, too. I mean, you got, you got mothers and dads complain how harsh boot camp is. But then they don't understand that, hey, we're getting these kids ready in case there's a war.
Thank you.
You'd rather us beat them up here or they get killed over there? Which one you want?
We're teaching them to survive.
Yeah.
One, one thing that I saw, being a teacher, and it kind of applies to politics and society in general in America right now, is the lack of parenting. You know, you brought it up. You've got single parents, a lot of cases. You know, you have single moms that are working and busting their ass. And to be blunt, they just don't really understand how to raise a young male teenager. And when you come in as a coach, you kind of feel like obligated because really, you're the only role model that they ever see. So, I, we kind of took that to the extreme as far as teaching them integrity, teaching them to be men. I remember one of my coaches, the kids were out running around, you know, doing their cardio, and the cheerleaders just happened to be running around. Well, you know, that went down, right? They whistling at the cheerleaders, blah, blah, blah. Oh, that's, he went, he went, you know, crazy. He was ex-military, too. And they're all looking at me. I'm like, nope. You guys need to understand, high-quality men don't do that crap.
Yes.
You know, you got to take, you got to have more integrity than that. And nobody's, those girls aren't going to respect you for doing that. So, try and teach them life lessons. There's a couple of videos on my social media where I run in, you know, some of my players are pushing 30 now. You know, they're married, have their own kids. And they got their own little success stories.
They're still like a dad to them.
Yeah. And they'll come up. I don't even recognize them, you know, because these are grown men now. And they'll come up and say, hey, Coach, how you doing?
You put me in the game, Coach.
Right. So, it's, it's a good point.
It's like, I can win. I can do it. You're not there anymore, Bobby.
Right. Bobby brochure.
Bobby.
The water boy.
That's what I got, the water boy.
Yeah, but it was, it was a great time. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about, you know, teenagers. And as far as being a coach, you know, I learned a lot of stuff I learned in the military, you know, and just applied what I knew. But you kind of have to tone it down as far as with kids. And like I said, I was very lucky. I had some great assistant coaches. The parents bought into it, you know, in the end. And it just, it really was very gratifying for me, too, when, you know, we started winning games and kids. And for me, it was more about just seeing the kids excel. And, you know, it's like you get a kid that was third string and then all of a sudden, the light just goes on in their head. And they're getting it now. They're getting the drills. They're getting everything. And now they're playing first string within a couple of games. And it's like, wow, okay, that's really good, you know, as far as self-improvement for their self-confidence, too. So.
So, what are the boundary lines for G?
G is a mess. They just changed it.
Here we go.
It is a mess. So, it's, it's basically all of Old Henderson. If you want to say west of Boulder Highway.
Like a, like a Water Park or what's it, Water Street?
Water Street, right. And then it goes all the way into Boulder City and Laughlin.
Oh, you got Boulder.
Oh, okay.
And Laughlin.
But then it comes down even further, all the way down to almost Tropicana and goes all the way down to Eastern. And then cuts over, all the way over to, I don't know what the street is, but it's just south of St. Rose Parkway or Horizon Ridge. Yeah, it's a long, it's a big area.
It's a long drive.
Wow.
You making it out there?
I have not made it out there.
You need to go out there.
I want to. I've been in Boulder City.
Don't want to.
It's about an hour.
This is your shot. This is your shot.
Oh, I will during the general. There's no doubt about it. But for this primary, it's, it's, I'm doing stuff, two or three.
Just make one day for the primary. Go out to Laughlin.
Exactly.
You gotta go.
Yeah.
And I try and plan these events around community events. Like my Memorial Day, my dad is buried out in Boulder City. So, I go out there and, you know, kind of stand next to his grave. We kind of have the same official name. So, it's kind of surreal. But, you know, someday, I think I'll probably be buried out there, too, no doubt. So.
So, as a veteran, while you're living today, as a veteran, and if you become county commissioner, what do you plan to do for the veteran population here?
So, I've talked to several groups. I go to the VFW also Tuesday, Friday nights for Taco Night and Burger Night.
Can't miss that.
Nope. And, you know, the healthcare thing, you know, we, we thought, you know, under President Trump, you know, they were, they were making great progress. And he came out with plans to where if the VA couldn't get it done, they, he was going to give them referrals to go to the private sector, public sector. Well, that's all kind of come to a halt. You know, they, there's no pressure. There's no accountability. And you can see it, you know, they use the COVID excuse, of course, just like.
Everybody's going to use that. That's their trump card.
No pun intended. So, you know, and they're trying to do it again. They're trying to bring it back. You hear all this stuff. But of course, that's political suicide for them right now. So, they're not, you know, wanting to do that. But the, that's the big thing. They need to start looking at how they award different disabilities. There's a lot of people that are disabled.
But as a county commissioner, you don't have no power in that. That's a federal seat. But as a county commissioner, what could you do?
Unfortunately, there's not a lot because we don't control any of the veterans' budgets. What we can do is like local VFWs. We give them tax breaks. We help fund them. We did have the one in North Las Vegas that closed down, which is, should have never happened. They should have never allowed that. That was one right outside the Nellis Gate.
That's a bad area.
Yeah, but they, they could have moved it. You know, they could have done something else. Because now, I don't think there's very, I don't even think there is another VFW on this side of town. You have the one in Henderson, and then you have the one in Boulder City, which I, I go to both of those and talk to the captains.
What about to get the resources to the vets? Because what I found when I'm working in the community, they're giving away like a billion dollars to the vets. They don't even know that. There's some homeless people. And even if they have like a shaving bump on their skin, they can get money if they don't have a dishonorable charge. And even their family can get help.
So, that would be another federal program. But what we could do, we could deal with the homeless. That's a county issue. We have some homes that are, that are funded, but we could do a better job of that. And then, of course, you know, rehabilitation. One thing that I brought up in your, in your interview is we can almost solve two birds with one stone. I believe that there are a lot of people that are in the military that would make great police officers and would love to be police officers.
I can see that.
We could fast-track that to a point to where, you know, we could get them going. I know they give them points when they go through their interview process after the testing. But I think that's something we could work with veterans even before they're discharged. You know, that's something they could do online courses or do the, you know, because there is a lot of cerebral laws and stuff they have to learn.
Maybe a program after they get out. I like that.
So, then, you know, get them before, while they're out. So, I know when I got out, there was a brief period there where I was stressed. You know, I didn't know what the hell I was going to do. I knew I wanted to go back to school, but, you know, I didn't know how I was going to provide for my family or any of that, you know, because I didn't have to worry about it.
They should have really had that in place when you get out.
So, why, why are you running for county commissioner?
So, why am I running for county commissioner? Well, to be blunt, I didn't serve two wars for this fucking shit. Okay? This country, with its new administration, has just, it's, it's almost, you can't say it's by accident anymore. I think my personal beliefs are that there's a lot of foreign interest. There's a lot of people at the top, if you want to call them high liberals or wherever they are. I don't even think they're even, doesn't even matter what political party. If you studied, I took political science in college. If you study the different types of government and time, two things you have to do to implement communism. One is you have to get rid of the middle class, which COVID did it. Forty percent of your businesses went under during COVID. They're trying to reopen. I think that's a big part of what county commissioner needs to come in and start giving tax breaks. Get rid of gasoline tax. That should be a no-brainer at this point. You know, we know that the federal policies have really kind of driven up the gas prices. But at a local level, I think there's more we can do. The other thing is you have to take away weapons, people's right to defend themselves. If you look at every country that's gone socialism, it's not socialism, people, it's communism. Okay? They get rid of their weapons or their right to defend themselves. And then the people can't do anything. And you look at, you know, what's going on in China and other countries right now. This is a problem. Even in Australia, they recently got rid of all their weapons. And they were doing during COVID, they were doing enslavement camps and everything because the people couldn't defend themselves. And I'm a firm believer, even with all the tragedies that we're having right now, the problem is not the guns.
It's not.
The problems is the mental health and the stress and society as a whole. You know, you've had, you know, they don't even talk about all the mental issues that COVID has caused. Okay? And you're seeing it now with the young Americans that, you know, they've been stressed out. A lot of people have just got this whole attitude that they've just given up. You know, the country's screwed. There's nothing we can do about it. I don't believe that.
Neither do I.
I don't believe that. I think we, it starts at the local levels, county, state.
Yes.
We take it back. You look at the states that are doing well, that did not follow the federal mandates. They're doing fantastic. Everybody wants to live there. Okay? Well, that's where the people in those states, including Nevada, need to wake up, get rid of this woke culture, the COVID culture, all this crap that's going on because you're being propagandized by foreign media. And you need to wake up and see what's really important. And what's really important in America right now is God, family, and country. That's it. And our, our country is a republic. And we need to understand that it is a republic for a reason. And our constitution is constantly under attack by one party. And that's the division. I mean, the Democratic Party. Because they do not exist if they don't divide the people. If you look at every time there's an incident, all they're doing, they're opportunists. They all run to it and try and fan the flames.
So, as a county commissioner, and you being the only R, if currently, right now, if you were there.
There is another R. I'm running against a guy in a primary.
No, I'm saying if, if you're the county commissioner and you're the only R.
Oh, on the, on the panel.
On the panel, how do you plan to work with your colleagues?
So, obviously, you have to be tactful. Okay? But at the same time, I feel like, you know, I have four years to make a difference. Okay? This is a four-year seat. And the way you do that is auditing. You expose what is going on. Now, they're not going to like that. But the reality is, that's how you get rid of it. Okay? You got, you got seven county commissioners right now that are feeding all their contractors and running up debt. The guy that I'm going after sits on the Water Authority. He also sits on the chair. And when he left Henderson as a mayor, he left him with a $90 million deficit to where the new mayor had to reduce staff by almost 50% just to try and get out from under the deficit. And he blames it on, you know, whatever's going on.
COVID.
But the, well, then it was the economy or whatever. But they knew what was going on. And he was just a crappy businessman, a crappy leader. Okay? So, he's doing it now. You know, you look at the county right now and the amount of money that they're spending, they're just running up debt. And why are they keep running up debt? Because they've already made promises to contractors where they're getting their money. Okay? They have already made promises to the casino industry. You know, they're feeding these guys, you know, huge campaign money. And even though we have a cap of, I think it's like $3,000, all they do, it's a shuffle deal. You know, they open up a new LLC or they send it to their buddy and they, they do it. So.
You mean $5,000, right?
$5,000. Okay, the cap is. I don't know. I don't get that much.
Primary and five in the general.
Right. But he's sitting on almost half a million dollars. That should be a red flag to every voter in Henderson and Boulder City. Why does he have half a million dollars sitting to spend money when it's only a $90,000 a year position? Does not make sense. Okay? There's only one reason. Because he's being bought and paid for.
Could you prove any of this?
I was just about to ask that.
It's politics. You know, they, they know the game. They're going to shuffle the money around and everything else. The only way you're going to get rid of it is get somebody in that's not money-driven. Okay? I'm not doing this for money. I understand that you need money to run for office. But I'm not making promises to anybody. You know, if you believe in what I believe in and trying to make my home and our community better, get rid of any of these emergency powers that they have and keep them in check. Because our seven county commissioners, they could have stood up. Okay? It happened in eight other counties here in Nevada. But they did nothing. As a matter of fact, they imposed COVID restrictions to all county workers. So, they went right along with their party's narrative and shut everything down and killed 40% of our small businesses.
Have you been knocking on doors?
I have.
What are the issues that face your district?
The issues that you're facing right now is obviously, well, the school district is huge. A lot of people think, well, you're Clark County Commissioner. You should be able to help out with the school district. Okay? Unfortunately, the state has taken away the budget power from the county commissioners. I think they need to change that. If you look at other states, the county commissioner, even though it's state money, needs to go through the county commissioner. And that's really the only way you're going to hold the Clark County School District in check. Because when you start taking money away, they start listening. Even as a teacher, they were all money-driven.
Well, you being a teacher, too, did you hear about the homeless teacher that lived in a car with her three kids?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had teachers that.
And couldn't qualify for benefits.
Yeah, it was a mess. I, I saw new teachers coming in. They were gone by Christmas. Okay? They just weren't getting paid. They weren't getting the respect.
And that is important for the kids, as you brought it up. When you're a coach, like, when you do have your teacher or a good teacher or coach, you do spend time with them, majority of the day. So, we definitely need some good teachers.
Oh, yeah. My days, I mean, yeah, I'm all for after-school programs.
You're like the parent. You're like that second parent.
Yeah, that, that hour, two hours right after school is very critical to kids, whether or not they're going to get in trouble or they're going to do something positive. So, the only way you really need to keep them out of trouble is to have programs that they want to do and something positive for them to learn outside of school.
Yeah, I've noticed that. They got rid of a lot of after-school programs.
Vocational programs, all four vocational programs. If you look at other countries, they've kind of changed their whole curriculum around where teacher, even when I was a teacher, you know, they rewarded administrators, principals, vice principals based off of test scores. Okay? Well, you don't understand, you know, over 80% of the kids are not going to go to college and at least they're not going to finish college. So, what are they going to do? They're going to get out of school. They're going to go run up debt, whether it's a technical school or college. And then they can't seem to figure out, you know, what they're going to do because they don't have a trade. Or if you teach them in school, like high school, a trade, and you can work, you know, they're doing this up north in Reno. And I've met with a couple of other different organizations that are looking privately-funded trade schools. Because the unions here in town, they're in trouble. They have no labor. And they are worried. So, they're trying to work with, starting up, they, they have their own apprenticeship programs, but nobody's joining into them. Same thing when I worked for Department of Defense. They're like half-staffed. And they have programs to where I worked with, I sat on the board at CSN, to where if the kids took 16 credits worth of classes, okay, we would give them a job, making $60,000, $70,000 a year and pay for their education.
So, how does being a county commissioner affect the school board and higher education?
So, we need to fight. As far as Clark County goes, we need to fight to take control of our schools. We do. Clark County commissioners need to stand up to the state and say, hey, this is our county. We need to hold them accountable at a local level. Clark County School District, the reality is, you're probably going to get broken up. That's it. They're too big. They've found out, you know, they're doing studies, you know. They're talking about, you know, how big do you get to a point where the school district's too big and it's unmanageable? Because they're cutting, you know, when they first go in, all they're doing is cutting all the accountability out. So, these principals are literally just teachers that go through a couple of classes and then they make them administrators. It's very biased. It's very political when you're in the school district. If a principal doesn't like you, you're gone. You know, they're going to treat you like crap. Even if you're a good teacher, the union, union's not very good. I mean, they're almost right there with the school district. It's right in their bylaws. They cannot strike.
It's like clicking.
How does that work? If you're a union, that's really your only teeth. You know what I mean? What are you going to do? So, yeah, there, there's a lot of issues with the school district. Obviously, safety is another big one right now.
Oh, yeah.
We look at the money federally that, you know, we just sent overseas and they're laundering money through federal governments. Okay? We could have used that money to totally change the school programs nationwide. We could have resolved student debt nationwide. But instead, they're sending it to foreign countries.
I want to stick to the county commission focus of what you could do. I, I always tell people, don't concentrate on what you can't do. Concentrate on what you can do. So, what you can do is try to fix a water problem. How do you plan to do that?
Okay, so the water problem. This, this is what people, a lot of people don't understand. You could take away everybody's swimming pool and everybody's yard in Clark County, and you're not going to change a thing. That's all political BS. Okay? They're trying to make it look like they're doing something. It's not going to do a thing. The problem with Lake Mead right now, where we get our water, is that they are tapping the Colorado River upstream. California is.
Yes.
Okay, they have a lot of minute water that's coming from California, or excuse me, from the Colorado River right to California. We're not even using our allotment. Okay? We're allotted so many acre-feet of water. We're not even using half of our water. So, who's using the other half? Arizona. Arizona's taking it and they're surplusing it and putting, Tucson's putting it in the ground. Okay? So, you wonder why.
They use it as well as reserve.
As reserve. So, they're doing all of this and it's not public. Well, they should, they need to be transparent. On January 19th, this was, this was the focal point that finally did it for me. I went to a heritage meeting in Henderson for all the mayors. And they were interviewing each one of the mayors. And you had my opponent on the Democratic side stand up and told, somebody asked a question about the water, whether you were going to start restricting building. He said, no, we need the revenue. Well, of course, he needs the revenue. He's, you know, that's how his little game works. Okay? Where Boulder City has a cap on permits. He said, no, Henderson, Clark County will not do that. So, they said, okay, well, what's your solution? His solution, and it's come out now. And when I first brought it up, everyone was like, no way, Billy. I said, look, you can look at it on YouTube. There's a video of him saying it. Now, it's all come out, ERJ and everything the last couple of weeks. So, his solution was $3.2 billion of Clark County tax money to build a water treatment plant in Southern California to reclaim the water in Southern California that's currently going in the ocean and then pipe it back to Lake Mead. That's just, as an engineer, I'm just sitting here going, that's completely ridiculous. Hey, I got a thought. How about California reclaim their own water?
Thank you.
And use their own water so they're not tapping our water upstream.
And they have oceans. They can do the whole saltwater, whatever. And I'm like, we don't have an ocean out here. All's we have is Lake Mead. Stop stealing our water.
They're, they're starting to feel the pressure in California because you just had their governor come out the last couple of weeks talking about if California's don't, don't start saving water, they're going to start shutting down or doing fines or mandates on their water. So, it's becoming an issue. But as Clark County Commissioner, you know, my opponent also sits on the Water Authority. He's done nothing. Well, why are you there?
So, you were pushed out with California.
Yeah, you got to stand up. You got to go to the federal agencies and say, hey, we're not going to do this. You need to hold, and you need to bring it out into the public because that's really the only way these politicians are going to do anything. Either they're worried about getting reelected or you're taking their budget, one of the two. That's the only way you're going to get people to do what's right. Because most of these guys are so corrupt. You know, these career politicians, they don't, they don't care as long as they're getting their money. You know, they assume, you know, eventually, you know, Lake Mead's going to fill back up at some point. But.
You think for their lifetime?
I don't think so, not at this rate.
That's getting scary now.
They're going to have to, I mean, California, if you're watching right now, Root Awakening, they're about ready to shut off your power out of the dam. And how are your electric cars going to work with no electricity coming out of the dam?
They have grass out there. We don't have a lot of grass out here.
I always try to figure out, with all this construction going on, we must be plentiful with water over Lake Mead. And then I go down there and it's not so. So, why are we continuing building while our water is continued depleted?
Money, money.
Well, you can't drink money.
I agree with you 100%. But you, you know, you talk to the county commissioners who are, who are actually issuing the permits and everything, you know, they're, they just want the revenue. They want the revenue. And their solution is, well, we'll just limit the size of the swimming pools. And, you know, the size, and they're going to start taking away people's grass in their backyards next.
We barely have grass out here.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if they all want money and there's no water here, it's, it'll be unlivable. So, everybody would have to move.
Agreed. We live in the desert.
We can't survive without water. We're 80% water.
I, you know, right now, at our current use, we're way below even projections. They're saying, I've seen everything from three to four inches a month. The lake is dropping right now.
Yeah, I know. I literally seen.
That's scary. And they're saying that if it gets to a certain point, I think it's like 900 feet, they're going to start taking drastic measures. Well, you need to start taking drastic measures now.
Now.
And one of the big drastic measures that they can do is they can stop putting, letting water out of the bottom of the dam, which means reduce power. Well, of course, you know, California's not going to like that. But the reality is, you got to, still got to have water, you know, to survive. What's more important? Power or water to survive? I would say water.
Water.
You, you guys are going to have to figure out how to make more power.
Cavemen never had power, but they did have water.
Yeah, they had water. I never understood that again with the beaches. We have so many beaches. I never understood that again with the beaches. We have so many beautiful beaches in California, but we have nothing here in Vegas except Lake Mead. So why are they taking from our.
You got one ramp.
Little pond, I feel like at this point.
You have one ramp open in Lake Mead right now. That's it. And it was a disaster. People were sending me pictures for our way to get on and off the lake over Memorial Weekend. And it's, it's nuts. It's all mud going out.
It's a beach now.
Because it's, the water's falling so quick that the, you know, the dirt doesn't even dry.
I wouldn't even allow, um, any type of, um, water craft on that water anymore. I would, I would ban it.
Yeah, ban it. There's no way. You can't, I'm sorry, everybody with buckets.
You know, that's our wa- you know, that's our water source and we have, you know, ways of filtering that stuff out. But, um, but yeah, I mean, they did that up in Reno, you know, they made it a, you know, a, a clean lake or what have you. And I mean, it's beautiful.
Couldn't they take the, the snow caps from Mount Charleston here?
It's not enough.
Yeah, it's not enough.
So that water that's coming from Mount Charleston actually goes, that's why Vegas, um, right at the. So the reason why the strippers were originally founded was because the water table's so low. There's water all up and down the strip.
Oh, okay.
So you look at like.
I thought you said something.
So if you look at like, um, I built the Fountains of Bellagio back in the day, okay, when they first, uh, leveled the dunes and built the Bellagio when Steve Wynn did it. They have three wells and the resorts, they don't pay for their water. You know, they, they come off of their own wells because the water table's right there. So, um, but yeah, you know, all their sewer goes back into, you know, Lake Mead through the wash and treatment.
I'm on well, so I'm quite happy there.
Yeah, don't say nothing there.
So I'll call you up when I run out of water.
Be coming for you. But, um.
And I was told, I was told that we're, and it's three houses on that well. We're good for like a hundred years.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, lucky you. I mean, for the time being.
Ready.
Yeah, but that's where most of the water is going into the, into the ground and the water table from, from that area.
Well, Mr. Mitchell, uh, do you have, did, did we cover everything you want covered?
Um, well, we got, we, right now, we got, you know, mail-in votes going on. I've been posting a lot of stuff. If you don't know my social media, it's billymitchell.info. I have, uh, my Facebook, uh, Instagram, Twitter.
We're gonna do that.
Okay.
Bonnie, thank you so much for coming on the program.
Yeah, thank you. Didn't get to talk that much. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, but I wanted you to talk. Because honestly, that's what you do. You want you to talk. I want to hear what you're saying.
Mr. Mitchell, I need you to look, it's the camera mark is going to zoom in on you and you tell folks why they should go to the polls and vote for you and your point of contact and anything else that comes to mind.
Oh, will do. All right. So my name is Billy Mitchell and I am your voice for county commissioner, uh, G. So, uh, why you should vote for me. I'm a veteran and ex-school teacher. Um, I'm born and raised right here in Las Vegas. I'm a normal guy. I've worked out the test site as an engineer, program manager, small businessman. You know where I live. I'm not going to hide from anybody. If you don't like something, contact me. I'd love to, you know, answer any questions that you have. You can find me at billymitchell.info. I have, uh, Facebook pages, uh, Instagram, uh, Twitter, Getter, all that good stuff. So TikTok, yeah. And, uh, you can go to my website and there's a little information about me there. We're in the, uh, mail-in ballots have gone out. Uh, I'd appreciate your vote. Please vote, even if you don't vote for me. Um, turnout's been pretty bad so far, but if you're a Republican, please vote. Basically you're selecting who's going to be on the general in November. So it's very important for you to pick, you know, who your candidate is and do a little diligence and find out who you align with and pick the right candidate.
Well, Billy Mitchell, thank you so much for coming on the program. Bonnie Mercado, thank you so much for coming on the program. Appreciate it. Folks, that's, uh, Billy Mitchell, candidate for Clark County Commission, District Leader G. Billy is endorsed by veterans in politics and we encourage everybody that, uh, lives in District G to vote for Billy Mitchell and get him into the general. This is Steve Sanson and Bonnie Mercado with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.